Seven eight two zero one. To consider, thank you. To consider and act upon any lawful subject when may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. The time is six P M. We will call to order a recording of a quorum. We have a recording of a quorum. Okay, the only thing is Frank Garza is missing. He said he might be a little late. So. But for purposes of quorum, we have a quorum. Frank Garza, our attorney. Invocation and pledges of allegiance to the U S and Texas flags. Mister Burton, Councilman Burton will have the honor of doing that.
Well, have we followed where gathered here today to form the best decision that will affect the lives of those into our charge. Please do us wisdom and understanding. Guide our decisions, make it be fair, just and merciful, and. Hope we can all get along tonight. Amen.
Amen. He comes from Burton. So now we'll have the public comment period. At this time, citizens who have filled out a registration form. Prior to the start of the meeting may speak on any topic they wish to bring to the attention of the governing bodies, so long as the topic is not on the agenda for this meeting. During the citizens to be heard section, no council action may take place. And no council discussion or response is required to the speaker. Citizens to wish, who wish to speak on a specific agenda item. When that item is called for discussion, must fill out a registration form. Prior to the start of the meeting indicating which agenda item they wish to address. So I'd like to welcome you all to our council meeting. Thank you for being here. We have one person that has signed up. Michelle Marine Employee Statement.
Sorry, I'm probably a little bit nervous. You probably hear my heart beating. Good evening, council, administration, citizens, employees, and guests. I standing here tonight because it is my responsibility to bring to light a profoundly serious situation. We, as the employees of Balcony Heights, have been experiencing. I started working here almost two and a half years ago, and in all that time, I have never felt an ounce of unwelcomingness. You could ask ninety percent of the employees, and they will testify that there is almost always a greeting between us. Almost everyone that walks in the door of the Justice Center, whether it be employees, council members, ex-council members, or customers looking for a department within the building, there is always a friendly greeting. The court employees are the first faces seen when walking through the doors. So we try to make it friendly. Do we drop the ball sometimes? Yes, we do. We get distracted. We may not look up if we're working on something. Or we miss the mark, but we try. When first, when I first started, I was new and nervous and didn't know anyone, but my uneasiness faded very quickly. I started meeting council members and employees, and immediately we were exchanging greetings through the window. Within days of being elected as mayor, Mister Rodriguez entered the building and introduced himself to us as we did the same. It wasn't unpleasant. Genuine, I could not say. That interaction with Mister Rodriguez was short-lived, however. For us, and by us, I mean the employees that work on the first floor. We all discussed and agreed that the feeling of uncomfortableness with Mister Rodriguez started right after the first couple of council meetings. I can speculate why this is, but I'm sure it only be met with, answered with a denial. Yvonne, Mika, Rose, and I were approached in or around August by Mister Peralis, the previous city administrator, that Mayor Rodriguez had told him to tell the court employees that we need to greet him when he, Mister Rodriguez, walks into the building. Mister Peralis said that we were to say hello, hi, wave, or anything that acknowledges him. We explained to Mister Peralis that we felt we, as if we had been acknowledging him all along. But apparently Mister Rodriguez did not feel it was to his standards. We agreed to comply with Mister Peralis's request nonetheless. Whether this conversation between Mister Peralis and Mister Rodriguez occurred, I don't know. On several occasions following that conversation, we have acknowledged Mister Rodriguez. He never reciprocates. We have all experienced this personally. After the incident that occurred in the court office on September eleventh, twenty twenty four, several letters of grievance were written regarding it. I'm sure almost everyone knows about the letters because they were published online. As employees, we were voicing concerns, as is our right for the Balcony Heights Personnel Handbook, over an incident that we were forced to bear witness to. I say forced because we were in our office, and this incident occurred at our entrance door during court business hours. In my professional opinion, this incident should have taken place in the privacy of an office outside the presence of other employees and potential customers who could have walked in at any given time. I myself was a business manager for a Catholic church. Albeit, I only had about four employees that I managed. We respected each other. It was, if an issue was with an employee, I made sure to address that problem behind closed doors. I did this out of respect for the employee and the employees that the issue did not concern. I never embarrassed or berated the employees as that is most unprofessional. I speak for myself when I say the letter I wrote was out of concern for the way in which Mister Rodriguez managed that situation. In my professional opinion, it is unbecoming of any person who holds a seat on this council. As elected officials, you are all held to higher standards. You should be the example which we as employees look up to. How you act and treat others is the example by which you lay out for us to heed. The letter I wrote was not personal. It was business. I don't know Mister Rodriguez on a personal level. I don't know him outside of these walls. And if I could be so bold, I wouldn't want to associate with a person who acts and treats others the way I have witnessed and personally experienced him do. I wrote the letter as a legitimate concern as an employee with the expectation that it would be addressed, corrected, or explained as maybe a misunderstanding that we could all learn from and move forward. That was it. Unfortunately, I feel that after the release of the grievance letters, Mister Rodriguez has exhibited much animosity towards the employees whose names are written in those letters. How do I know, you may ask? This is a small place of business. We are coworkers who support each other and express our concerns to our fellow coworkers when we need a shoulder to lean on. Since those letters were published, Mister Rodriguez now comes into the Justice Center, and when we greet him, his response is usually along the lines of, open the door, referring to the door to get into the back offices. There is never a reciprocation of the greeting. The occasional thank you is always in a firm tone, which personally doesn't sound genuine to me, more like a formality because someone did something for you. It has come to the point that I personally feel uncomfortable and emasculated by Mister Rodriguez. His face shows such disdain and disgust for us every time he comes to our window. He looks at me or Mika with such an intimidating, unfriendly facial expression that I honestly no longer feel comfortable to even look him in his eyes. In my personal opinion, it is as if he demanded the greeting only to be in a position to disregard it, as if we are lowly employees who need to acknowledge him while he is our superior, does not need to reciprocate or acknowledge our presence. The following examples solidified this reasoning in my head. On Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four, representatives, I believe from Bear Met, arrived to deliver chairs for dispatch. He greeted them with huge smile on his face, hellos and handshakes all around. I can honestly say that was probably the first time I saw Mister Rodriguez greet someone in this building with a smile and a hello. On the same day, he appeared again a few hours later with another businessman waiting for the elevator. He did not look at us. Suddenly, he was at my front window. It alarmed me because I had my head down working on some documents. He never said a word, grabbed his business cards, which he had Mister Lada place on our counters, and proceeded to move them to a table between my counter and my coworker's counter. When I looked up, he never made eye contact with me, but I remember his face. A scowl and a look of what felt to me like anger, maybe even hatred. I just remember feeling so uncomfortable, I dared not say a word to him. No other person on this council, new or old, has ever given me that feeling. Every other person has, has been kind or nice or both. But most importantly, you've been respectful, and I want to thank you for that. It may not seem like much to you, but it means a lot to us. Last Thursday, November fourteenth, an incident occurred that even today has me shaken. It has been reported and filed, and just to be clear for the record, it was an incident that occurred with Mister Rodriguez and myself during working hours. The incident involved the opening of a door to the back offices. The inter, the interaction that occurred with Mister Rodriguez left me dumbfounded and shocked to me to my core. It took me a second to even realize that I was, I still had a customer in front of me. After I finished assisting my customers, I could feel my ice watering. I tell you, gentlemen, I do not have high blood pressure. But if you had taken my pressure that day, it would have been dangerously high. I do not, I had to cry on my coworker's shoulders, and they were wonderful in helping me calm me down. Rose kept telling me, I have never seen you this way. You always tell us not to let him rob us of our peace. I have hoped for the best since the mayor took office and have tried to lift my coworker's spirits, but this one really knocked me down. It is not for me to know why Mister Rodriguez does not have a badge to enter certain parts of the building without an escort. However, it is also not my or any employee's responsibility to be at his beck and call when he wants access. We all have a job with job duties, which include putting the customer above all other duties. I will graciously open the door for him as I do for any other employee or customer needing to gain access to the back, but not at the expense of being reprimanded for the nature in which I do so. I opened the door the same for everyone, and no one has confronted me or voiced a concern about the way in which I do so. I feel this was just another way for Mister Rodriguez to exert power over me and emasculate me. The definition of a bully is a person who habitually seeks to harm or intimidate those whom they perceive as vulnerable. The definition of harassment is to create an unpleasant or hostile situation. This is what I am experiencing from Mister Rodriguez. I feel as though I am being bullied and harassed by him every time he comes to the office. He consistently speaks to us in an unfriendly manner or stares at us to the point that I look down as I do not want to make eye contact. This is starting to cause mental and physical anguish every time he walks in the building. Mika has admitted to me that she feels the same. Our workplace environment is normally ninety percent enjoyable. Everyone who seeks assistance in the building appears courteous and respectful to each other, or at least to us in the court. But when Mister Rodriguez walks into the building, everyone is on edge. Is this his intent? To make us feel inferior? To have us lower our eyes out of fear? Is he trying to exert that feeling? Is he the type of man who wants people to fear him instead of respecting him? Maybe, or maybe not. He rules with fear nonetheless.
Excuse me. We've already gone over the three-minute rule. I've actually gone a little bit more.
I can only express.
Are you done? Because I'll allow you to speak a little more if you like. But we're really over the limit with, so.
I can only express my feelings, but if you were to ask the employees next to me, they will tell you they feel the same. What happens in this room during council meetings is not the employee's fault. We have no control over the decisions made by a vote. We were told that writing those letters would not be met with retaliation or retribution. I beg to differ. That is exactly what we are experiencing, retaliation and retribution for voicing a concern. We all make mistakes. We are human. I am the last person to cast a stone. I made mistakes as a young manager, but I asked how to be better, what they did, what they expect of me as a superior, and I adjusted myself for the better. Employees can be some of the greatest teachers who can point out our flaws and make us better managers, superiors, and people. Me standing here voicing my concerns yet again is, like I said in the beginning, it's not personal, it's business. We are employees of Balcony Heights, and we represent the city just like you do. But how can we be expected to represent this city proudly when those who are elected by the city treats us so inhumanely? We can work together. We do not need to treat each other with disdain and no respect. Like the saying goes, you can catch more bees with honey than with vinegar. I will give you the benefit of the doubt. Your jobs are not easy. I understand that, but making our jobs more difficult does not make yours any less difficult. We, the employees, which includes the administration, the police department, the fire department, and dispatch. We are all here to support the council, including you, Mayor Rodriguez. Please respect that and us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marine, and God bless you. Now we will move over into the presentation. New hire introduction, Police Officer Cody Schilling. Both of office, City Secretary Merlo, right after that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Staff, Residents of Balcony Heights. As you all know from last council meeting, one of our newest officers, as the continuation, is Officer Cody Schilling. He ran into a little bit of car problems, I think, from the last meeting, so he was unable to attend. And so he's going to be our last officer that we're going to swear in. We have a little bit bio, and then, of course, our oath. And we actually are blessed with a former officer that's actually going to do his pen in here, and I'll introduce him in a little bit. So let me go ahead and continue here. So Officer Cody Schilling is a native Texan, raised in Universal City, and has resided in the Hill Country area since two thousand fifteen. He enlisted in the United States Army in two thousand eight with one deployment in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom, and has a passion for advocating for fellow veterans. He completed certifications in firearms technology to include an armor certification at Sonoran Desert Institute in two thousand fourteen and graduated the San Antonio College Law Enforcement Training Academy in September of two thousand twenty four. He holds licenses with both the United States Parachute Association, as well as the National Association of Underwater Instructors. When he's not skydiving, skydiving or scuba diving, he loves to go hiking with his white Siberian Husky Apollo. Officer Cody Schilling is grateful for the opportunity in being selected as a full-time officer. Mayor, Council, Staff, and Residents of Balcony Heights, please join me in welcoming Officer Cody Schilling into our department.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. It's a dream come true, and I'm excited to be here.
You're welcome, officer. Be careful out there, watch yourself, and thank you for your service to our city.
I have a former officer, ours, used to be Corporal Edgar Artis. I, Cody Schilling.
I, Cody Schilling.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of a full-time peace officer.
Of a full-time peace officer.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the city of Balcony Heights, Texas.
And the city of Balcony Heights, Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Officer Schilling, if you'd like, we'd like to come by as we congratulate you, sir.
Welcome to the department. Me with the meeting, and we'll remind everyone to maintain a quorum in the council meeting, and if you don't, you will be removed from the chambers. So now we have the oath of office, City Secretary, Ms. Lisa Merlo. I have the honor of doing this for you, Ms. Merlo.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I have the honor of presenting this to her. She could have chosen anyone. Chose me, so. Your right hand up. Oath of office I'll administer to you. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Lisa Merlo.
I, Lisa Merlo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of the city secretary.
Of the city secretary.
For the city of Balcony Heights.
For the city of Balcony Heights.
In the state of Texas.
In the state of Texas.
And will do to the best of my ability.
And will do to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the city of Balcony Heights.
And the city of Balcony Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I will sign my name here for you. We'll make it official. And I know you're going to do a fine job.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can sign it right here. And I think you have your family here.
Yes, my family is here today.
Family, husband and mother.
And my son.
And her son.
Daughter law.
Daughter law.
Daughter, other daughter.
All right, everybody. Take a picture with Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and the citizens of Balcony Heights. Thank you for this opportunity and this appointment. It means a lot to me, and it is my honor to serve. Okay.
So officially welcome her to our city. And I can tell you, my first experience that working with her so far has been wonderful. And even before that, Lisa is just a wonderful personality to the community and our city. She's always got a smile on her face, and she just does everything with joy. I think she's going to do a fantastic job for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Mayor. Ms. Merlo, thank you very much for taking the, the opportunity and the honoring us with your service as secretary. We've seen you grow. We've seen you do so much. Thank you, and we look forward to really working hard with you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your kind words.
Did I leave my panel with him? I think I did, didn't I? We'll now move over to the consent agenda items. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. So does any council member have any questions? Anyone regarding approval of the minutes?
May I be recognized?
Councilman signs.
I believe we need a motion before we can have discussion. So I would make, I would move to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
One second.
Okay, let's call for a vote. On it. We don't, we want to have a discussion now, right? Correct? Yeah, let's have a discussion. So we got a second already. Councilman, and we normally talk about it. A motion for approval. In case there's any amendments or anything that we have a concern about. I don't know why we changed it from there. It's okay, we'll move on. So I do have some questions for Mister Messick and Mister Lada. So there was a councilman, David Sellers, referred to September twenty third minutes regarding item number nine on the outcome on the investment pool transfer of five hundred thousand to our bank. Mister Messick, the finance director, clarified the reason for the transfer, noting that this is a routine movement consistent with the budget. So I was concerned that the legality of that, and I had asked our attorney whether it was okay to do something like that, and you confirmed that it was. But I read something today that I looked up, and it said under section two, two, five, six in the Public Funds Investment Act and the Local Government Code, it specifically says, and just correct me if I'm wrong, I don't.
Mayor.
Yes.
We're talking about the approval of the minutes. If you want to speak about that specific budget amendment, we'll have to place that separately on the agenda. This is simply the approval of the minutes.
Okay, so then would, would I object to that one item to say I don't approve of the minutes of that item? Or is it okay just?
Well, you can, well, you don't vote, so.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying to basically move forward with it and just carry.
If, procedurally, my recommendation is if, if there's issues that you want to raise with regard to the Public Finance Act, my recommendation is we place it on a future agenda to go into that detail on that issue raised. Because all we have right now is just the approval of the minutes. That's correct.
All right. Then let's go ahead. We have a second to that motion. Does anybody have any other questions regarding the minutes? Anyone? No. Okay. So we have a second, let's call the vote. Councilman, let's go ahead.
Yeah.
Councilman signs.
Yeah.
Say it.
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers.
Yeah.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah.
Okay, we have five oh, motion carries for the minutes. Approved. And then we'll get the item on the agenda. Mr. Lada, can you make a note on that, please, for our next meeting to place this discussion on the investment portfolio? Questions that we have regarding to the.
Mayor, make note.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll now move over to the finance report for the month of October twenty twenty four. So I'll open it up for discussion, and then we can have a motion to on that. Does anybody have any questions pertaining to that on the finance?
Mayor, my motion was to approve both consent agenda items. Yes, sir.
For any discussion to the items on the finance report for me.
Well, the motion was already voted on and approved by zero.
Oh, so the both of them were in one, rolled into one. I'm sorry, I'm way ahead of myself. Okay, so we have it approved, so it's done, and we move on to the next item. This is side of discussion and possible action to authorize city administrator.
Point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
So. Thank you. So I would like to discuss items five and six as being put on the agenda improperly. So our code of ethics and council relations policy requires that any agenda items placed by the city, by the city council or the mayor, requires five business days. It needs to be submitted by twelve P M, noon, five business days prior to the regularly scheduled meeting. Because Monday was Veterans Day, five business days would have been Friday, November eighth. So these agenda items, any agenda item on here must have been submitted by Friday, November eighth at noon to be included on the agenda. These were submitted Thursday evening at eight o'clock or after eight P M. So I would move to make a motion to remove these from the agenda, considering they were not. That's my point.
Best address. Where you go on to your next item. The point of order has been overruled, and we will stay with item number one, and let's move to business.
I'd like to appeal the, the overruling. I'd like to appeal the overruling.
Counselor, provide some direction, please.
The point of order is raised, the chair has to state the reason why they're denying the point of order. A council member can appeal the ruling, make a motion to appeal the ruling of the, of the presiding officer, and then there will have to be, there's a second, there will have to be a vote on whether or not to overrule.
So let me state the reason I feel that it should be overruled. The fact is, Councilman, signing one of your agenda items that you have placed for the appointment of interim city administrator Albert Lada, you did not provide supporting documentation. You provided a salary for the interim city administrator, you and Mister Lasseh. Both of y'all agreed that you were going to pass that. You didn't provide any supporting documentation for that. But you allowed yourself to do that and break that rule. rule that you created right before that. You created that rule to set. And then Councilman Burton questioned that. And he said, how can you, after putting a rule together, stating that you needed to have supporting documentation and certain rules? Now, these are just internal rules. These are not state laws. They're just policies and procedures. Okay, that's all it is. These are not state laws that we need to follow or break or anything like that when we don't follow it. They're just policies and procedures that you guys adopted. It's not a violation of any state law. So.
May I respond?
And why do you want to remove it? Why don't we just keep the business going?
May I respond? May I respond?
Go ahead, yes.
Right, so I'll make two points. Number one, I did ensure that the proper documentation was on file with the city administrator when I filed the that's not on me. I did make sure that the city administrator, at the time, Yolba Fraz, had the documentation necessary for that agenda item to name Mr. Albert Lara as the interim city administrator. So be, just because you weren't submitted with or provided with it does not mean that I did not ensure that it was on file. So I took the proper steps and I ensured that I was meeting the letter of the law when I introduced that agenda item. Secondly, just because you believe that I did something wrong in in entering tho- that agenda item, that does not give you carte blanche to just ignore rules that are in place for our city. Okay, these are not state laws. I did not accuse you of breaking a state law. What I did say is you're not following the code of ordinances and city council code of, or council relations policy in introducing these items. So I believe they should be removed.
Well, I have thirty minutes. Okay, so I have to concur that just by putting an item on the agenda, you still didn't put the supporting documentation. Now, it's your responsibility to make sure that we have it, or at least refer to it in your statement. Now, if you want to just go ahead and do this and as usual disrupt the meeting again and just totally go left field again, when we got this city business to take care of, there are important items. And I just see you obstructing again. But it's fine, I'll wait, bide my time, we'll put it on the next agenda and properly put it on there. But the supporting documentation is the most important because you didn't provide that supporting documentation. You're telling us you did, but we don't know because no one in the city council got a copy. We have nothing to make the decision to appoint Mr. Lada as the city administrator.
I did ensure that the city.
Or the salary ring. So we'll go ahead and move forward in the, in the spirit of moving on, moving, of meeting forward. There's no sense to getting a tit for tat. Had enough of that with you guys. And so let's just move forward. I'll accept your, your motion. And let's vote on it, get it out of the way. Next meeting, we'll be over it again. No problem. So do you have a second to your motion?
I did not.
Second to the motion to, Councilman Signs?
I was not allowed to make a motion.
Well, you, you can make your motion.
You, you, go ahead and make your motion.
I overruled, we already went through that and clarified it, now you can make your motion.
I'll make a motion to remove items five and six since they did not meet the criteria for agenda items.
Okay, so five, six. Okay, we have a second to that motion? Second. Okay, any discussion? Go ahead, Councilman Burton.
We meet once a month. And you know, if if you want to kick the can down the road, that's, that's fine, if you, if it makes you feel better. But I, I, I think we should, it's, it's here, we're here. Let's get it done, get this out off the books and take care of business. Instead, you're gonna want to kick it down the road till December. And you know, it, it's same old, same old, so let's just.
If I may, Mr. Burton, we have not given any information regarding this creation of an independent balcony sites police review panel. What would that entail? We don't have any information about an I O P C, which is an independent office of, of police contact. How would those be staffed?
Point of order. And I'm gonna call you on a point of order because you're going into details on the item. So you're not permitted to do that, sir. Because we're not discussing the item on the agenda.
If I may, I, I'm responding to Mr. Burton as to another reason why this should be removed.
You're the presiding officer, you, you've, you've done your point of order, so.
Mayor.
So he's back to, back to, he had a four.
Point of order. Call the question. Let's get it done.
Okay, let's get it done. Okay, so we have a second to your motion?
Yes.
Councilman Lasseh has led a second. Councilman Alverde will call the vote now, sir. What's your vote on it?
Yay.
Councilman Signs?
Yay.
Councilman Lasseh?
Yay.
Councilman Sellers?
Nay.
Councilman Burton?
Nay.
Eight, two nays and three, uh, yays. Three, two. Motion carries. Okay, so the item five and six will not be put on the agenda. We won't discuss it. So let's go now to item number one, discussion and possible action. Authorized city administrator purchase a kennel. Mr. Lada, you have the floor, sir?
Good evening, Council. And so I have a little presentation, and this is discuss animal control issues. And this is an issue that's been ongoing here since I've been here. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention and try to begin at least some processes and procedures that we can ensure that the city of Balcony Heights is doing its, its best to ensure that we do not expose ourselves to any risk of not following state law, violating property rights of, of owners. Uh, because animals are, are very touchy issue. Next slide. So our, basically our code of ordinance says the city shall provide a suitable animal shelter. And we do not have any suitable animal shelter. And if you get to the letter of the law, uh, it's very difficult to get one. Uh, very few cities have them now. Uh, because it's so difficult to maintain. Some of the problems that we have is that our ordinance requires us uh, and, and we probably need to change some of the verbiage on here because it has license. We don't technically license animals anymore. What we do is require them to be microchipped. Uh, so to me, that's kind of really what it's saying, because it really comes down to animals that we can try to determine who the owner is and animals that we cannot. So I, I would assume a licensed impounded animal is somebody that we kind of have an idea who owns the animal. Uh, so we have to make every effort to notify the owner if, uh, that owner has not been notified. And we cannot keep that animal more than a hundred and twenty hours. Uh, unlicensed impounded dogs or cats or other domestic animals, even livestock. We should not be kept more than seventy-two hours. So this is our own uh, ordinance telling us how long we should keep animals. Uh, of course, if an animal is not reclaimed by its owner within the designated timeframe, then it becomes our property. And that is a very touchy situation there because once it becomes our property, then we're responsible for that animal. Uh, and taking care of it until we properly just, uh, take care of it in a proper manner. Uh, again, wild cats, dogs or animals, uh, animals that are sick, which means then we, we do not make that determination. That has to be made by a veterinarian. Uh, if we can't identify who the owner is, uh, we can put the animal down immediately. If the, uh, what I've been told, basically the rule of thumb is if the expense to really to bring that injured animal up to acceptable standards of care really is, uh, astronomical, uh, then that's why it says it basically gives us zero hours. We can have the animal put down immediately. But again, we don't know who the owner is. You know, if we know who the owner is, then we have to take care of the animal. Until we can at least get, uh, identify who that owner is, make contact with him. We also are, uh, responsible that an animal control officer uh, is a person that can capture unrestrained animals uh, or nuisance animals. And, and our ordinance defines what those are. The, the good thing is, uh, we did have a person, uh, actually two individuals go and take the basic animal control course. And they both passed and, uh, including the exam. So they basically, now the city, at least I know from my perspective, we have two people that are legal to, to actually restrain an animal. And that's a problem. Again, if we injure an animal and they're not trained, again, that's where we're, again, risk is increased. Uh, animals that bite. Uh, again, basically, uh, if now an animal can bite somebody and they have a legitimate reason, right? Somebody trespassing on somebody's property, like getting in the backyard and the dog's back there and they get bit, obviously they have no reason to be there. Uh, but anyway, if they don't have a legitimate reason, they're deemed dangerous for our ordinance. Uh, we can require that the animal be kept muzzled and all those other good things there. Uh, we can tell that to the owner. We need a sworn affidavit, uh, complaint with sufficient evidence, and we gotta actually take it to municipal judge to tell us that we can then direct somebody to do all of those things up there. And again, an owner, uh, has to submit an animal to quarantine for ten consecutive days. Okay, and so these are, these are some of the requirements, and as you can see, some of those requirements, uh, if the animal doesn't have an owner or we can't locate the city has taken possession of that animal because it's unrestrained, uh, now we gotta do something with that animal. Okay, next slide. So the issues are basically animal control officer. Like I said, luckily, we seem to be headed that where we kind of check most of those boxes off. Uh, both those two individuals uh, and any additional officers who pass that class, we, we have to make, you know, they have to have continuing education, so it's not, it doesn't end there. They have to continue to do that. Um, so just understand that, uh, we need to maintain that going forward. An animal shelter, currently, I would say the current state, we have to hold an animal, they try to take it, they'll put it in the police holding cell. That is not a valid place for having animal. Uh, future state with the approval of council is we can get a kennel. It's probably not the most optimum, but I think it's much better than putting in a police holding cell because a kennel that you can purchase will at least be designed, have all the proper environmental controls to ensure that the animal is being properly cared for. We also are supposed to identify a city veterinarian. Uh, so we need to find somebody who will do that for us and come up with some kind of service agreement. And the reason why that is, is because again, once we take hold of an animal, we need to make sure that animal is in good shape. Because if that animal comes into our control and then the owner comes and picks it up and says, what did you do to my animal? And we had no city veterinarian actually, uh, what do you call it, uh, look over the animal to make sure he's in good shape? Then we leave ourselves again open to a high, uh, amount of risk and liability. So those those two, animal shelter and city veterinarian are two things that we really, really need to make sure that we have at least something that at least pass some kind of liability standards uh, so that we don't leave the risk for the city out there. And so one of those, next slide, is getting a kennel. Uh, this is along the lines of what Live Oak is doing, uh, Leon Valley is doing. Uh, theirs is a little bit bigger. This is a two, uh, basically we can house about two animals in there. Uh, and that's about all it is. Normally, we only have one animal at a time. Uh, they don't really make one animal kennels. It's probably good to have two in case we accidentally get two. Uh, it has to come with an electrical package because we have to have electricity to this, uh, kennel because we need A C and we need a heater. Okay, we cannot have an animal in a, in a, in a place where he's freezing to death or he's dying of heat. Okay, those are, that's cruelty to the animal. And so, uh, that's why we have to have an air conditioner in there and a heater because we never know when we get the animal, what time of year it is. We need to make sure the animal is taken care of. Uh, the cost of a kennel for the two box type is about twenty-three thousand dollars, more or less. Uh, of course, there's other expenses that we would have to do. We have to get electrical wherever we decide to put it. Uh, we gotta get water there because again, we gotta clean the kennel and let the animal, if he decides to do anything in there, we gotta constantly clean it. Obviously, the animal is removed, we have to go in there, make sure it's sanitized. And, and of course, we have to have a pad site. When you put one of these, uh, it is mobile, so that's a good thing. So if we decide to move it somewhere else, wherever it ends up, uh, we can actually move it, but we have to have at least a level pad site. So we're gonna have to spend some money for that if this is the route we want to go. Uh, and then again, that's just the kennel. Once the dog shows up, somebody has to walk it. We gotta provide food and again, we gotta clean it. So those are some, again, some things that we would have to work out. Uh, obviously, we could use our maintenance personnel, uh, but again, that's, uh, that's something we would have to figure out, okay, because we have to make sure the animal meets all those standards and requirements uh, to ensure that the animal is taken care of, so that nobody comes back and accuses us of mistreating an animal. Especially an owner. Okay, next slide. So this is kind of what it would look like. Okay, these are some pictures that were provided, uh, of exactly of what we would be buying. Uh, if that's the route y'all want to go. So basically, it has a caged area, so the animal can actually go in and out of his little cubicle and then come out and walk around a little bit. Uh, but again, that's not, we have to make sure that, uh, sufficient, we have to actually walk the animal. Uh, but again, if we don't do that, then obviously we have to make sure those areas are cleaned up because if we don't let him out, uh, then, then he may be doing things in there that we would require us to clean. Next slide. Uh, this is kind of the interior of what it would look like. Uh, there is a partition between the two animals so that the animals don't, uh, look at each other or can't come in contact with each other in case they don't like each other for whatever reason. But like I said, for the most part, we get one animal. Uh, those, uh, ball, uh, dog bowls, uh, those are, the dog cannot tip them over or anything like that, so we don't have to worry that we put food there. Next, you know, it, he tips his water bowl over and then he spends the next, you know, until the next person who comes out there and has no water, the, the water and the food uh, will stay in those bowls. And plus, it allows the person who's doing that not to have to actually be in contact with the animals. Okay, so they can put that in there. So it doesn't have to be somebody who's trained. It can just make sure that when we get an animal, we just have to have, making sure who's doing that, make sure their assignment, and so that they can go in there and feed the animal with the fresh water. Uh, and then again, whether we walk the animal or not, we'd have to do some little bit more research on that, but at least the dog can walk outside if he wishes. Uh, but still restrained. Okay, next slide. So again, our way forward, again, uh, if you've so deemed, we can purchase and install the kennel. Uh, right now, I would say we would probably put it where the, uh, uh, maintenance folks are at. We would have to clear an area mainly because that's probably the person. He's, um, currently the animal control officer certified, so he would probably be the one that would go in there. Plus, if the police officers would be, have to be his backup, uh, then they can go in there and they can actually get and make sure that the animal has water and food. And if it need to be cleaned and, uh, you can at least notify the maintenance person that we need to come out there and clean the kennel. Uh, again, like I said, we have to hire a veterinarian uh, and animal care services. What I consider that is we could get, maybe we hire a walker who comes in there who, who actually can walk the dog and feed the dog and all that, so we're not, uh, again, those are just, I, ways we can explore to try to minimize the cost of bringing in people in on overtime, uh, and we can have a set fee. Uh, animal control is not cheap. Okay, it's expensive. That's it's just the bottom line. Uh, again, we can create procedures to meet our code ordinances and state law. Uh, I kind of drafted up some procedures on what do we do? But the main thing is, like I said, we really need to get a hold of the owner. We want the owner to take control of his animal. And if, you know, and then if it's a, an officer uh, who's there to cite the, the owner if the animal is in violation, so uh, but we really do not want to take possession of the animal at, at all costs. Uh, because once we do that and then we end up inheriting the dog because the owner says, well, you know what, I can't take care of it. Y'all can have it, and then basically volunteers to surrender the dog. That's great, but guess what? Now we have it. And now we have, have to decide what to do with it. Some of the things that I, I didn't put that on there is maybe reaching out to the Humane Society or other places like Animal Defense League, but again, they're not gonna take the dog unless we probably, and again, we have to talk to them and see if they're willing. We may have to establish a service agreement and it may be expensive, or they say, sure, we'll take it, but you're gonna have to give us a thousand dollars. I'm just taking off the top of my head. Um, we'll take it. And then it becomes their property and then we can wash our hands of it. And again, that's only animals that the owner has surrendered to us, or we have no owner and we've done everything we can to try to find the owner. And it, and it becomes our property based on our ordinances. But again, we really don't want to do that if we have to. That's very expensive. But that's the only way we can dispose of the animal. We, we ourselves, uh, don't have that. A lot of vet places now, they don't want to put down an animal. So that's just difficult. We, we tried Becker and Becker basically did not want to do anything. They're not set up for that. I don't even know if they'll even put down an animal for us. And that's a problem because if we're stuck with an animal that is now we gotta do something with it. Uh, luckily, up to now, we haven't had that issue, at least within the year now that I've been here. Um, but that is something that could happen. I think that's all. Anything else on the line? Next slide. But that's it. Any questions?
I'm gonna recommend that we table this and not make action on it right now because there's a lot of, uh, this, this create procedures. I, I would like to review what we have on file now. I'd like to find out where in the hell you're gonna put this, where the heck you're gonna put this kennel. Um, there's just questions upon questions upon questions, um, to take action now. So I, I wanna, I don't care if it's a workshop or a later place, but I, I want to review all this and get together with y'all and make a decision at that time.
Motion is to, your motion is to table.
Correct. I'm making a motion to table it until further discussion.
I'll second that.
Uh, the only thing I ask is, uh, I know we got your two comments on record because we can go back and listen. Anybody else who has any comments, if they can, uh, send those to us so that I can put that in, uh?
May I be recognized, mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't need it. I didn't know I need to be recognized to provide a second.
Yes. So just, mayor, a second and, and then just go ahead. So we keep the momentum going.
Thank you. So Mr. Lard, I do have a couple of questions along the lines of what Mr. Sells was bringing up. So, um, I would like some more information regarding the, the ancillary expenses that would come along with this. Like how much would it cost to run the electrical, the water, um, what the fees would be for this veterinary, uh, contract? Um, also, how often do we run into these stray animals? Um, is there a city local that we could contract to when we do run across these animals just to house them? Even if it's a thousand bucks an animal, as an example, that's less expensive than paying for this kennel.
In, in my staff report, again, we used to have an agreement with, actually a long time ago, we had with Selma. Then we had with Live Oak. Live Oak told us that was the end of it. I did, uh, make contact with, uh, Leon Valley. Uh, they're in the process of trying to work with First Kirby. Uh, I asked them to go ahead if they did get any kind of agreement with Kirby to ask that we would, may would like to be a participant in that, see what the requirements are or what the uh, fees would be if Kirby would do that for us. They are also trying to work with Bear County because it's out there with Kirby. Uh, but they believe that one's going to take about two years before they think they might get the county to let them do it. Uh, and, and again, I asked, uh, them that, uh, to keep us as a, as a, uh, we're interested party. Not saying that we would do it, but that we're interested to give us an opportunity to, to tag along.
So clarification, uh, Mr. Garza, he seconded the, the motion, but is now referring to an amendment. And he was adding that other language. Is that what you wanted to do?
No, no, there was, there was a motion table second, but now there's, but there's discussion now. I don't think he made an amendment to it.
No, no, it wasn't. Okay. I want to make sure I understand.
He just provided me more stuff that I need to go bring back to you.
There's a motion and table to table, but at this time, this, the city administrators asked for, well, what else do I need to provide you for that? So when we meet again?
Just want to make sure I didn't miss the amendment if it was one.
There was no amendment.
Okay. So we have a second. Let's go ahead and, is any more discussion? Anyone else? Councilman Burton?
Um, I would, I would ask that you, uh, survey Mr. Herbert, Mr. Muncie and surrounding, I guess the trailer park people about constant barking and stuff like that. And, you know, I guess the veterinarian would be in charge of, if there's a disease parvo.
Correct. And that's the, uh, as our ordinance allows, now if it's no owner, as soon as he finds that out and then let's say he says it's $2,000 to treat the animal, we have the right to put it down right then and there. Okay. But if there's an owner involved, that's a little bit more tricky because we are still responsible to take care of the animal and then trying to recover that cost, as you know, may not.
Well, Pete is one officer.
Yeah, Pete is one. And a, and a police officer went with him. I don't know his name, but, but there's a second.
Um, you know, what's your backup plan for when, you know, one of them's on vacation? Uh, you know?
I'll work with the police chief to see about what we can do for his officers, uh, to get the basic course so that they all have that background.
Because, you know, um, animals don't just mean dogs, you know? You can have cats and then side by side.
Yeah, but cats have that, uh, if they belong to a colony and all that, it's a little different. But there are wild animals, raccoons, things like that, that include.
Uh, I would like to see what the, the neighbors would say.
A lot of what's the cost to the city on, um, the actual employee that's going to be the primary, either contracted or employee of the city?
Well, the employee right now, uh,
What are you proposing?
No, no, he, he's, that's just an additional duty.
Oh, it's gonna be our own public works guy?
Hmm, it's the main, one of those. It's our maintenance guy and then our police officer who went as well. So again, I have to work with the chief now. Of course they have their, their association agreement. So I don't know what, uh, and there's any additional cost because we're asking them to assume that. But at a minimum, when I, uh, assuming I get my other one back, or if we get a new maintenance person, we're gonna send them to get also.
Considering possibly adding a little compensation more for the public works because it is in addition to their classification of their job.
Uh, yes, sir. Me and, me and Mr. Messick are talking about that. So we may have to come back to you to get permission, uh, to, to, to order that, uh, a certification pay is, is really what it is.
And, yeah, anyone else?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilman Verdi, heal. Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah, just along those lines. Um, I would like to see when we get the public works, two people lined up to do that and then take the police department out of the equation. I'm really not comfortable using our police department for this type of service. Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes. And where, where, where would we fund this? It's, it's, it's unfunded, right? It's, it's, he's arguing here, this is an unfunded, right? Uh, we need to find out where we're gonna cough up the money for this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure we, to let you all aware that the, the, the cost of doing something wrong can be more than what we're probably gonna pay for this little account.
Anyone else? Okay, let's call for a vote on it. We've got a second to the motion. Councilman Valverde, let's say.
This is to table it, right?
This is to table it, correct, from more information and additional inquiry.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Science?
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilman Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, 5-0, motion carries, Ms. Myrtle. Now move on to item number two, consideration and action to adopt an ordinance amending the budget for 2023, 2024, end of year and adjustment. Mr. Messick, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, for this business item is more of a housekeeping matter for, uh, me. And as the audit has kicked off today, it's just to, uh, dot the i's and cross the t's with this. Those of you that have been on council before know we do this a couple of times every year. Um, so for this budget amendment, it's for last year's budget. The one that ended two months ago, the one you all approved 14 months ago. So it's not for this budget cycle. It's for the last one. Okay. And, um, so why we do this? Because at various revenues and expenses crop up over the course of the year that were unforeseen or not included in the approved, uh, original budget for whatever reason. And so amendments are made to recognize these new revenues and expenses. And we did that, uh, the first time back in March at the halfway point. And now at the end of the, uh, of, of the budget cycle before the audit kicks off, which is today. Okay. So this year end budget, uh, I'm asking that we recognize one, uh, new revenue line and that we reclassify for expense lines. Okay. So this budget amendment, you're not authorizing me to go out and spend more money or to collect money. We've already collected the money. We've already paid the expenses. We're just opening up the, the correct line or a better line, as some of these cases may be. Okay. So just looking at it real fast, um, i- i- if you got your agenda or request form there. Uh, so for jazz festival donations, that's our one revenue that we're asking you to recognize. Over the course of the jazz festival, uh, we did receive donations from different sponsors like Mr. Garza. So obviously we took the money, but we didn't have a line to put it on. Okay. So nobody's refusing money. We all like that. So I don't think anybody will have a problem with opening up that, uh, revenue line. For whatever reason, it wasn't open when we passed the budget. Uh, now for the other expenses, these are all reclassifications. These are all expenses that were recorded to an approved line. But in the course of, you know, finishing up the budget cycle, I realized that we could put them on a more or a better expense line, one that was more transparent and that would make more sense for the expense. Okay. So there's a, a couple of little ones there. The biggest one is the $32,000 for engineering services for Crestview 2. That was initially put on engineering services, which is very vague. So this line item will open it up to a specific project, Crestview 2. And that matters because we do CDBG projects, phase one, phase two, phase three, and we have to account for the revenue, uh, the CDBG funds later on, and this will help me do that. And so again, it's just a matter of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, opening up these account lines, which are a little bit more specific. And again, this is for last year's budget. Uh, you're not authorizing me to spend more money at this point. It's already been spent. We've already received the revenues. And so obviously staff does recommend that we approve the budget amendment. But if you have any more questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I'll do. Engineering services, uh, the 4752, is, is that included Crestview 2 or? Uh, la- the last.
The one for 32, 360?
Uh, no, the, the, the one, the very bottom one.
Oh, $47.52?
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, that was something that was originally recorded into the general fund, but looking at it, it was obviously, um, um, it belonged in the sewer fund. So it was paid in the general fund, but if we could save money in the general fund, but input it where it belongs and pad out of the sewer fund, uh, so that would be a better way of doing it. And the same for all those expenses, really.
Oh, mayor? Uh, unless anybody else has, has any questions, I will. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Hey. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you all. The ordinance was included in the packet, mayor. Yes, sir.
So you provided, you want me to use this one?
Will do, mayor.
Okay. You're gonna provide it, the ordinance? Or do I use this one here? Yeah. Do I use this one here and sign it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we now will move over to, uh, item number three, discussion and action to prove job description for the city administrator and post on websites. Mr. Lottie, you have the floor, sir.
I don't know at this time, Mr. Valverde, did, did, uh, Councilman Valverde, did you want to talk about your item first or do you want me to go to first?
You go ahead. When you done, I'll go ahead and go over the job description here.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, so basically today, all I'm asking, if, if y'all want to, uh, move forward based on this timeline, uh, to go ahead and, uh, advertise and, and then try to, again, this is a timeline that y'all can adjust, uh, as need be, depending on whenever it comes up, whether, uh, you know, how many people apply, uh, whether you all can actually meet on those days. Uh, but anyway, that's the, uh, example timeline. But today I'm asking is that if you want to proceed on that timeline, then I need y'all's approval on the job description and, uh, authorizing me to post it on TML. Okay. And that starts the ball rolling. Uh, without that, then, then, uh, what do you call it? Uh, y'all can't move forward unless y'all want to do something else. That's all I have. So I'll turn it over to Councilman Valverde because I know he had a, the land now.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, the job description that was, uh, presented to us, I believe needs one more thing to be added on there. But, uh, and along with the job description, along with the contract job description, we also need an evaluation form, which I'm going to present to you guys. Can you pass this on, please? Take one, pass it on. I would like for you to take this home and, uh, check it out and make any changes and bring it back next, next council meeting with your suggestions, if you, uh, agree with them. Let me give you a little history on the job description. On the job evaluation forms, I'm sorry. For a while, uh, the city had been using the same evaluation form for the city administrator. And the city minister was being evaluated by five council members. And a while back, there were personal conflicts.
Mayor?
Yes.
The only thing on the agenda is to approve the job description. He's referring to the job evaluation form.
Which, which covers the job description.
I'll go ahead and allow it. Okay. We're okay though?
Is it okay?
Frank, just give me your opinion and what you're thinking.
It, it depends on how much detail we go into the job evaluation because again, the only thing on the agenda, and I would, I tend to disagree, a job description is totally different than a job evaluation.
Okay.
But my understanding is the city administrator is looking for approval by the council to post the job description. Councilman Valverde did say he had one change to the job description, which is highly, very appropriate to discuss that. But now we've gone to discussing a job evaluation that's not listed on the agenda. And that's the only thing. So if the discussion is brief, tying it back to the job description, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to raise the concern with regards to the open meetings and how much further away we go from the job description.
Okay.
See, we can curtail it to that.
Long story short.
Go ahead, sir.
The, um, evaluation form that I just passed covered all the job description duties here. And I, I believe it's number, uh, let me see, number, numbers, number five is what I'm asking to be added on to the job description. So that way this evaluation form will be 100% matching the job description. I have a lot more to say about that, but that's, that's okay. So just take the evaluation, evaluation form home, study it, bring it back.
So at what point in this calendarized, um, recommendation do you have, Mr. Lottie, where we will be able to sit down, clarify, provide, uh, more, so to speak, a wish list of what we want out of our city administrator? In the language prior to you go posting? Can we do that in the interim while we're waiting for the?
Well, I mean, this, this job description is what's, people are gonna see, anything you want to add all this time.
On that now, I think we should, we should be working on that now, council. Uh, is anyone wanting to add any additional type of, um, language to it? Or wish list that you have and what you want to see from your new administrator when we advertise for it? I have a couple of suggestions on my end, but I'd like to hear what council has to say.
I have the floor.
Yes, sir. You do, Mr. Sellers.
Again, I'd like to have time to table this and, and, and look at this and read it. Uh, I would like to table this item on the agenda. Number four, to review the application and discuss it further with the city council.
Councilman, are you seeing item number three?
Yes.
You yield Mr. Sellers or you still?
I didn't hear what you said.
He wants to hear, repeat.
Uh, item three, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Item three, just to clarify, Mr. Sellers, you yield the floor for a moment? Or you still have the floor?
Yeah, no, I, I just.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Make a motion to table.
So you move for a motion to table?
Uh, we discuss this, mayor.
We have to ask, give a second to his motion to table.
If there's no second, then it dies.
We have a second to Councilman Sellers' motion, table, the item.
Pursue a discussion?
We have a motion on the floor. Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. We're entertaining a second. Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. We're entertaining a second to that motion to table so that he can have another opportunity to review this and go back and, um, respond at a later date. For us, the council. Do we have a second to his motion? Do you have a second to the motion? Because we can't have any discussion until we get a second.
I don't have a second. I just want to say something about it.
Dies for lack of a second. Okay, now go ahead, Mr.
Okay, what I wanted to say is like, we don't have to table this because this is the job description we're talking about right now. What I passed out is the evaluation form, which matches the job description. And that's the one that we can bring back at next council meeting to approve, disapprove. And that's why I was asking for you guys to look it over and make changes, come back with your suggestions.
May I rebuttal that?
Just go ahead, Councilman Sellers.
The reason I tabled it, uh, requested a table is because I have not read this at all. This is my first view of it. And I don't know what's in it. I'd like to read it first. That's all I was getting at.
Okay, Mayor, may I be recognized?
Councilman Burton, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mr. Valverde on, on this, that, you know, it's, it's for the, for the job description. This is totally different, and I can unring the bell maybe by saying, uh, we need to have a, a future meeting, uh, soon. Or we, we can also discuss this and the crash situation. Uh, try and get one in before Thanksgiving, if, if everybody's schedule can, can do that, then we can discuss this. But I, I guess I'm, I was being naive here because I already thought we were advertising on T M L. And we were just going to make some adjustments to the, the job description, but, um, if, if y'all want, if y'all want to table this, so be it.
No, no, I, I have not advertised.
Okay. Councilman Sides, you wanted to be recognized, sir?
Yes, I, I just wanted to clarify that for Mr. Sellers, that these are two separate items. So this is something that we can use in the future to evaluate the performance of the, the next city administrator, this draft that Mr. Valverde has handed out. So it's not something that's timely, that, that we need to do immediately. We can take it up at the next, uh, regularly scheduled meeting, or if Mr. Burton's, um, request for a special meeting is done. But this is separate from approving this, uh, job description that, um, Mr. Laura has provided for us. Uh, that does include the revisions that we asked for with the economic development activities. So, uh, I would make a motion to approve the job description as provided by Mr. Laura for the city administrator and post on their websites immediately.
How about the addition that was requested by Councilman Valverde?
That's what I was going to bring up.
So he can amend it and.
Okay.
Yeah.
So right now we have a motion on the floor, but Councilman signs. Okay, we have a second to that motion to Councilman sign. Do we have a second to his motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Burton has made a.
You can.
Call for more discussion on this. Go ahead, Councilman Sides.
I was going to, I was going to let Mr. Valverde know he can make an amendment to the motion when we vote.
Yes, I'll make a motion to amend the, the motion to add on what's on number five of the, uh, evaluation form on the job description. Control.
So we have a main.
There's managing change.
Amendment to the motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll accept. I'll accept the amendment to add managing change to the description, the duties, and then post as soon as possible.
So you're rolling all one into one?
That's amended, thank you.
Understood. Okay, now the only thing that I'd like to discuss and possibly add is that in the conflict events such as prohibition section of it, we should consider prohibiting any moonlighting by the city administrator to any other cities when he's working for us. He should be exclusively working for us and at any given time not working anywhere else, even on his off duty time. Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, uh, want to point out that that's in, in the past, the city, when they approve a contract with the city minister, that's in the contract, that they're not allowed to work with anyone else.
Can you point me to that specific language?
It's in the contract. It's not in the job description. It's been in the contract in the past, for example.
Not the employment agreement.
Not the employment agreement.
Yeah, that's what I have in front of me.
Okay, I, I don't have it in front of me, but let me pull it up and I'll.
Because I missed it. I didn't see it, but I have it in front of me, your city administrator agreement of employment between City of Balcony Heights and hired, uh, city administrator.
Mayor, in the, in the contract.
Just give me a ch, just one second, just to look at this.
It's number three, hours of duty.
Hours of work, okay? Okay, then city minister may not engage in any outside employment without obtaining approval from the city. Okay. Okay, I'm, go ahead, Councilman Lysia.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to refer to. I had already found that section and, and everybody. And it's also outlined in the, uh, like Mr. Garcia was saying, in the contract.
Yeah, that's what I, I had missed it. I didn't see it. Okay, and.
Mayor, and this is the one that, that was admitted, but given out last council meeting for you guys to review and make whatever changes or suggestions you also need.
All right, just want to make sure I threw that in there. We have the rolled in amendment into the first motion that we had. Is anybody else wanting more input on this subject, on this subject? From the council? Hey, let's go ahead and call for a vote, Councilman Valverde.
Yay.
Councilman Sides.
Yeah.
Councilman Lysia.
Yay.
Councilman Sellers.
Yay.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries five oh on the city administrator agreement of employment between the city of Balcony Heights and the posting of the job, correct?
That's, that's Mr. Lottie will start posting tomorrow.
All right, sounds good. All right. Okay, and we have skipped five and six, so we don't need to discuss those. We'll move into number seven, department.
Mayor, we're in number four now.
Discussion access, that's right, the equipment for the dispatch. Discussion and action authorized city administrator enter an agreement with X B I X for console furniture. So, um, this is the thing that we've been working on, and it was on the last council meeting. The council wanted to make sure that there was not going to be any more cost or any hidden cost to the city. We have, uh, met with the representatives of Bear Matt, myself, Mr. Lotta. They have assured it, that it assured us that there is no cost to the city, hidden costs or whatnot. And I think right when we finished our meeting, the new chairs came in. And so the councils, I understand, is, are being installed, or where are we at, Mr. Lotta? Can you go ahead and pick up at that point?
Our consoles can't be installed until we tell them to go ahead.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
The agreement, uh, to install the consoles. They did agree when we met with them that, uh, and there's, we're supposed to have a meeting. Uh, so with the approval probably needs to have on the condition that whatever's determined between the console furniture, Bear Metro, our radio folks, and our, um, I T folks. So they're supposed to meet, the deputy director is supposed to have, uh, schedule that meeting so they can go over what all has to happen to, to install that furniture. They agree that they would pay for any additional cost. What they would not pay, though, is any new equipment, any change to an equipment. So like if a monitor is not working, they're not going to pay for that. And that's.
That's our deal, which is fair.
Yeah, so.
That's a fair, fair deal.
The other thing, uh, that they did say, uh, we will not get billed for the furniture. That will go directly to Bear Metro, and they will pay the bill.
And they did say, Mr. Lotta, that the payment would be forthcoming very quickly when we submit the invoice, I think, on, what was it? Did we have to do that?
No, no, we don't have to do that. There, it's going to go straight to there. It's just going to go straight to Bear Matt.
So there's no cost to the city at all, and that's a little bit, he said seventy seven thousand.
Correct, seventy seven thousand for the console, and then whatever's agreed upon on the, uh, any, uh, installation. Uh, any of that will go, again, our folks will send the invoice to Bear Metro, and they will pay that invoice. The only thing we have to do is create a purchase order and sign the agreement.
Any questions for?
Yes, I have a question. Um, what would happen? What would happen? Would the city have to pay the money back if it doesn't work? That, that the, the city will recruit people to dispatch for? Do you know?
No, I'm, I'm not aware of any, any stipulations of if they went their money back or anything like that.
They didn't make any concessions about that at all.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lysia, did you want to say something?
Yes, sir. In, in, uh, hearing what was being said about just submitting the, the purchase order and no money coming from the city, that's still not what's written in the documents that I have in front of me. So I want to get clarification on that because I'm being told we're not going to be billed, but yet the letters and other document says we are accepting the funding and it reads different than what's being said and what's being written are two different things.
The original letter that, that I supplied in last month, uh, that letter, uh, if you read it, it does say that the invoice will go to Bear Metro. So they're, and they're going to pay for that.
Any other questions? Mr. Burton?
Oh, he still has a floor.
Who was first?
No, I, I still have another comment.
Go ahead.
And, uh, and maybe this is not the, the right time for this one, but I'm still extremely concerned on the having the all equipment that we need to have that's mandated. I still haven't received any formal documentation, anything saying that we are one hundred percent compliant with everything that is required by the city, the state, the federal. I'd like to see that before we, we, we move forward.
Any other questions? Uh, who wanted the floor next? Mr. Burton?
Uh, this, this question's for the chief. What is, what are your opinions on this as far as the equipment?
Oh, uh, what part of the equipment, Mr. Burton?
The, the, uh, council, I mean, the council, the console. Uh, you got your, you got the chairs in, at least that's, that's a step. The stairs were pretty torn up, as I understand.
Yeah, the, the furniture upgrade is a, a console or consoles. Uh, it's, it's a good thing because it's coming from Bear Met. Um, there are other things that are going on in dispatch right now. Um, I wasn't privy to the meeting that occurred with Bear Met, so I know there were some changes like Mr. Lotta explained, but I mean, it's, it's a good thing to upgrade the, the furniture, though i- it's not a bad thing.
So it's an asset.
It's an asset for, for the future, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, may, may I be recognized?
Yes, of course, Mr.
Thank you. So I do have concerns regarding installing this furniture at this point. Um, I do, you know, we've had electrical issues in our dispatch department that require a significant, um, repair. Um, and I would want to know how this furniture being installed would impact that. Do we have to put the furniture in? Then when the electricians go in, what's going to happen if it's in the way of the consoles or the walls or whatever they have to access to be able to get in there? So, um, I would also want to know what the the, uh, cost estimate would be for all that repair. Um, it may be prohibitively expensive for our city to undertake.
Any other input? Mr. Lotta, go ahead, sir.
So, uh, like I mentioned before, first of all, Bear Metro is involved with the issue we got going on, and the chief will brief it on his department update. But, uh, but that's the meeting that, that the deputy is supposed to schedule so that they can look and say, okay, when we put in this furniture, what all needs to happen? And, and at that point, that's when we'll come back and say this is the cost. If there's any cost, according to them, they said they would absorb that cost. So like I said, I think the motion, if to feel more comfortable, you could say as long as there's no cost, additional cost after they meet, uh, uh, the parties meet and they look at, okay, this is the furniture. It's going in these locations. Um, when they pull it out and they got to put it back in, if they need any additional wiring or anything like that. Of course, whatever the issue we got going on right now has nothing to really do with that, other than they have to fix that problem, which is totally independent of this.
Yeah, that, that's my concern, that it's replacing a full electrical panel is not inexpensive.
Right, but, but that, that, that has to do with us maintaining our dispatch regardless going forward. But this here, the, any additional cost, you, I, I guess you can pass a motion that says in, unless there's, as long as there's no additional cost when they meet. Okay?
Yeah, that's my concern. How much is it? So if it's prohibitively expensive.
Correct, correct. Or you can set a limit. If it exceeds, you know, a certain amount that we need to come back to you guys, that's fine. Uh, but again, they said that they were going to meet and that they would absorb any costs other than equipment. They're not, they're not going to replace or upgrade or anything.
Right, they're not going to, they're not going to pay for our electrical issues, though.
That's not the problem we're having right now.
Exactly.
They, they will pay if, when they put in the console.
They'll move an outlet.
If we need to move an outlet or something needs to, cabling needs to be done, or I T needs to move stuff around, and there's a cost with that. They said they would pay for that.
Yeah.
Right, but if they come back and say they won't pay for it, give us a number and we'll definitely tell them, hey, we can't receive, without coming back.
But not, not with the underlying electrical issues that we're having out.
Correct.
Thank you.
That, that's a separate issue.
Mr. Sellers, Mr. Sellers, go ahead.
Yes, I just have two questions. Do we have any, uh, recommendations, uh, by, uh, other cities that they have installed this equipment at? And that's question one. And question two is, they still want fifty percent down? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. No, they, um, there's no money going out other than what we put out to get reimbursed for right away. Uh, they're going to do that pretty quickly. Um, they did express to me that they're doing five to six other cities like us, just like this, and that this is the only city that they've ever had any problems with. And they're totally perplexed as to why, uh, we would make such a mountain out of a anthill. The electrical problems that we have are our problems, Councilman Sides, just for clarification. Those are issues that existed prior to this equipment, and it's, all you're doing is you're getting a, you're getting brand new free consoles for the dispatch. You're getting a tower to install your new equipment that you were going to do anyway, and upgrade the nine one one system for your citizens to be able to get top of the line equipment put in for our city to service our community. We're getting the chairs, if you've ever been in dispatch and taken a look at some of those dispatcher chairs that they have, they were in terrible shape. They had holes, they were patched, they were taped, and they have brand new leather thousand, fifteen hundred dollar chairs. And so, um, it's all free, free. And I think that, you know, making a mountain out of an anthill like this is just really counterproductive to a great opportunity that we're getting through Bear Met uh, for dispatch services at no cost to the citizen or the city. The other associated costs that you were worried about, that's on us to begin with. I mean, the problems with the electrical, the shorts, it was already existing. It's a problem that we have internally. So regardless of whether new equipment or the workstations come in or not, it's irrelevant because that problem existed and it's on us. So that cost was going to be associated to us regardless. So they just, it's more, you just can't understand why it's so difficult with the city balcony size, but you're the council. Uh, like the garbage thing, you make decisions on contracts and on acquisition of equipment and all that, so this is on your plate. It gets done. If it doesn't get done, well, then the citizens would lose out. But, uh, go right ahead and response. I just wanted to make sure through those things in there.
No, my concern is we, as a city council, still have not decided whether or not we're going to keep our dispatch services based on our upcoming financial, uh, workshops that we're going to be having regarding our budget for next year and what that expense is going to be. So I'm wanting all the information we can have to have a, an educated decision on that. So do we go and get all this new console equipment or a department that may not be here in nine months? Or do we spend X amount of dollars on a electrical issue that may not be an issue if we don't keep our dispatch department in a few months? So that's my concern.
So you're intent, and you're telling the public here and all the citizens of Balcony Heights, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. And anyone else make, be known if you're on board for this because citizens need to know this. You want to eliminate their dispatch services and route it through another department, contract with them and pay them money instead of having our own internal dispatch service intact for our citizens here. You want to, you want to outsource it, correct?
You, you're putting words in my mouth.
I want, you want to outsource it, right?
May, may I respond?
But do you want to outsource?
May I respond? May I respond?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm open to the possibility of it.
Oh, come on, don't dance around it. You're, you just be more specific because you don't dance around and now you're being put on the hot seat with the citizens. Be straight up.
Mayor.
Don't be, don't be scared to tell people.
I've made my.
They just want to outsource it.
I have made my position clear that if it comes down to our dispatch department or losing, uh, police and fire department personnel or having to cut city staff, then I would prefer we outsource our dispatch department because that would have the least impact on our city. Now, that is a budget decision that we need to come across and decide as a city council in a few months.
I think you're playing with words because right after you, uh, claimed that the dispatch was going to cost two jobs, those two jobs got filled up right away.
Uh, no, we're still short a police department. We're still short a police officer.
Nevertheless, want to, want to move forward?
We're still short in our police. Thank you.
And I, I still have a comment. I still have a comment. Yeah, and I know in, in previous conversations, you've been very critical of the, uh, prior administration not doing their due diligence and just signing things and getting them out of the way. This is exactly what we're doing. We're doing our due diligence. We're ex, we're looking into the documents. We're making sure that we have what we need and to, to support what Councilman was saying. It's, it's a budgetary issue. It's not something that we want to do away with. Now, on, on a, you know, sep- separate note, and maybe this is not, again, the, the, the right venue. It's my understanding the, uh, chair is supposed to be impartial and not going in one direction. Thank you.
Well, I thank you very much, and I'll go ahead and move over, Mr. Sellers.
Yes, I would like to point out that this is not the first time this item has been brought to the city council. And the first time it was brought to the city council, I opposed it vehemently because it was new. We, we did not have enough info on it. Since that time, we have had the time to research the info. And at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Burton, second. We call for a little bit more discussion. Mr. Lotto, could you provide some input? What your professional opinion, recommendation to us is on that? Yes, Councilman Burton?
The, these, this, this furniture, and I don't want to call it free money because it's not free, but it's, it's what all of us in this room pay when we hit that nine-one, when you see that nine-one-one fee on your bone bills. That's what that fee is for. That's what's funding this. It's free. If you decide, if you decide and you win on outsourcing your dispatch, it's irrespective of this. They're just going to put the new furniture in. Uh, I don't, I don't see why you want to turn down seventy-seven, seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of, of asset that the dispatchers could use. You know, you, you could say twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're going to get rid of dispatch. We might, we shouldn't do this, or i- it's irrespective. It, it's, it's a free, it's a free update to us. And we were going to have to pay the electrical anyway, regardless. If we don't get the furniture, they're still going to pay the electrical. So why, why are you so adamant about turning down a free upgrade to our dispatch and, and help the employees out? You, I, I, I just don't, like, it baffles me.
If, if, if I may.
Yes, Councilman LaSaya?
I, I, I agree and I understand what you're saying, but I still asked last month, and I asked again this month, who is going to provide us something saying that we are up to date and we have everything that we need? Regardless of the new equipment, are we one hundred percent compliant with all state, local, and federal regulations? And my concern with that is if we're going to have to pay out, which we are going to have to pay out, are we going to have to pay something else besides that? I haven't received that answer. I also have not received a definite confirmation on the cost.
There is no cost.
I understand. We still have to pay it out.
You don't.
No, that's not.
They're issuing the check straight to Bear Metro, correct?
That is correct. The contractor, however you say their name, will send the invoice directly to, uh, Bear Metro.
There's, again, it just, like I say, I'm doing the due diligence. The document I received still says something different.
And you're not going to get any more official than Bear Metro nine-one-one.
I was just going to tell them that. How much more clarity you wanted to make a decision?
And while I have.
You don't understand what's going on.
And, and your, your sarcasm is not, not welcome and/or appreciated. And you, you, I know we're, we're talking, and again, I'm telling you, we're doing our due diligence.
Mr. Burton?
Uh, Chief John Ahara, how many officers are we short?
We still have that frozen position from our sergeant.
The, the one that, that was terminated, correct?
Uh, no.
Or terminated?
He, he retired.
He retired?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Mayor, can you speak on the microphone, please?
Something about consider what's going on with what we're discussing, and he says, you're a fucking asshole. Now, this is the stuff that why I have to call these people under discretionary, discretionary.
And, and here, here we go again, making up comments, making up stories.
Chambers for doing that.
May I be recognized?
These chambers now. Let me call the bailiff.
Mayor?
I'm not going to tolerate it. Zero tolerance.
May I be recognized?
We're not going to go through yet. No, we're not going to go through it again.
I've never done anything that's out of or, I've never done anything that's out of order.
I know, but.
And, but you're accusing me of being out of order multiple times. I've never been out of order.
Right. And then we'll talk to you afterwards, Mr. Sighs.
I did not, I did not say what you're claiming I said. It is your prerogative once again remove me at your will. Again, I'm, I'm not going to stop talking. I'm calling the point of order because you are doing what you want to do.
It has nothing to do with you calling me fucking asshole.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Yeah, of course you're going to lie. Of course you're going to lie.
It has been your objective to get me out of these meetings for the longest period of time. I did not say such words.
Is the bailiff outside? Okay, Mr. Bailiff, we've got to go through this again, sir. Remove this gentleman. He used foul language in my present, broke the decorum of the meeting, and he called me a fucking asshole.
Stop saying that.
No, no, I'm not, John. Sir, you're going to need to be removed as well if you keep being disruptive, all right? It's, I'm putting evidence into the right record, sir. I'm putting record evidence into the record. That's why I keep repeating it. It needs to be recorded, so this stops, sir.
Needs to be recorded is your actions to do what you want to do.
Bailiff, move him out, please, move him out. I am, I am the mayor and I control this meeting. I'm the presiding officer. So please leave again, Mr. LaSaya, and this is going to happen over and over until you learn to become responsible council member.
Sir.
We were having a rare meeting again.
If I may.
Did it again.
If I may, you continue, you continue to do what you wish to do.
You did it again. And now I'm not going to tolerate you cursing at me like that, like.
I did not curse. Those are your semantics. It was read into the article. It was read into the article earlier. It was read last week that this is the type of behavior that you do.
Move out, please. You're disrupting the meeting. No, ma'am, you may not. No, ma'am. You may not be recognized. Okay, Councilman Sigh, what is it that you wanted to speak about?
No, I did want to say that I have never been out of order with you. I've never said anything bad. You, however, have called me names from the guys.
This have to do with what we're talking about right now?
You just said that us too have been calling you names and been disruptive and been out of order.
Disrupting the meeting.
I've never been out of order.
We can't finish our city business because you guys are constantly disrupting the meeting. You work in unison. It's obvious to everybody.
I, I.
We need to stop this.
I do not see how I've disrupted this meeting at all. I've never, I've never, I've not done anything out of order. I've requested your, your recognition before I've spoken.
Please leave, sir.
So I've not done anything that's out of order.
You're being asked by a law enforcement officer to move yourself, sir.
I, I understand that. Under, under what?
The authority, now the presiding officer, now leave, come on, get out of the meeting. Not going to have this in the meeting for everybody to, you're creating a circus here. That's all you're doing. And I'm not the one doing it. You are.
Again, I am being asked to leave a meeting because of the actions of the mayor of making accusations of me saying things that I said, claiming that I said things for his benefit.
Will you please?
It was read into the record earlier. It's been demonstrated over and over again that this mayor wishes to do only what he wants to do.
Thank you.
This is just terrible. You just disrupted the entire meeting. Disrupted the entire meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to be recognized.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the X B I D contract.
Uh, we've lost a quorum.
We've lost a quorum and.
We have no quorum, sir.
This is an example of how the officials we have are not holding up to their responsibility. Yes, go ahead. Keep disrupting the meeting. You just showed everybody what you do. It's terrible. Okay, there you go. Ladies and gentlemen of the public, I'm sorry that this happened, but you see clearly what happened. I did not cause this. This was Councilman LaSaya cursed at me during a meeting, and I divulged it immediately. He said it. I let you know about it, and that's wrong. You don't conduct business like that in public, and I'm not going to tolerate it. That's terrible and a total disservice to the city. So do we need to call a motion to adjourn or we don't have a forum to do so? So that's it. All right, now.
The time for the record, sir.
The time is, um, right now, seven forty-one. Frank?
Thank you.
Is there anything we can?